All right. It's all the September Vermillion County Council meeting to order, please. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Spence.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mr. Bush.
Here.
And here, Mr. Major.
Here.
Mr. Dreer.
Here.
Mr. Costello.
Down here.
All right. First up, we have the approval of the August minutes. Are there any changes, additions, corrections?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the September fifteenth, 2020, meeting of the Vermillion County Council, or sorry, August tenth, 2020, Vermillion County Council regular meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Major and a second by Mr. Donovan to approve the August tenth, 2020, meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The minutes are approved. Next, we have the Treasuries Report. Lorinda also brought us an updated statement for the trusted DNA accounts and the interest it has accrued thus far in the year. So what, you only need one do. So far, the trusted DNA account has accrued ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-one cents for the year. Are there any questions or concerns regarding any of the reports?
Nope.
All right. Please note that we have received the Treasuries Report. Next, we have the Comp Time Report. Any questions or concerns over the Comp Time?
Can I ask one question? Who makes this report? Is this the auditor's office?
I do.
You do? Is there, would there be a way, this is just for my convenience, I don't know if anybody else would be interested in this, if you have like a column, is there something that would show like plus or minus from the previous month, like additions? Is this next cell?
That's yours.
So like, it could always look back at the previous month. So you could always take a Comp Time report and see what went up and what went down without having to grab the other one and compare the two. Just about in the future.
Neely, you can have my column. Mine's got arrows on mine. On one of them it does, up and down.
Arrow.
It's like showing up and down in the Comp hours.
I have one of those, it's in the trash, she gives us new ones.
Oh. Did they have, is that the way it was before?
No, this is the first time I've seen it like this.
Okay.
You can look at this one if you want to look at it.
Oh, okay, that's not so. You can quickly, you know, if we had that, you could quickly scan it, say, oh, he, that went up thirty hours that month or so, what happened, or, you know, who are responsible for it, if they retire early or quit, you know, we'll say that, so, just as a visual.
Okay. Any other concerns?
No.
All right. Please note that we received the Comp Time Report. Next, we have the 2020 budget hearings. The last two days, we have conducted budget hearings, and we have advertised amounts. And I will read you the following amounts. Certain items have been overstated in our advertised amount, so we can choose which fund to take them out. So the complete total will not be the actual total that we adopt. But these are the amounts that we have advertised. In the general fund, we advertised ten million, seven hundred thousand. For reassessment, we advertised two hundred and forty thousand. Highway, two million, nine hundred thousand. Highway special, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Local road and street, three hundred and fifteen thousand. Motor vehicle highway, two million, nine hundred thousand. Cumulative bridge, seven hundred thousand. Health, two hundred thousand. Emergency telephone system, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Planning commission, one hundred and seventy thousand. Cumulative capital development, three hundred and fifteen thousand. Economic development, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. DOC reimbursement, sixty thousand. HR, LEP, RTK is twenty-one thousand, two hundred. CASA is thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirteen. Clerk's record perpetuation, thirty-six thousand, thirty-two dollars. Opioid Sims grant, sixty thousand. Certified shares, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Public safety, one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Assessment training fund, four thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. The LHD trust Tobacco Master, thirty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars. Victim assistance, forty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine. Bioterrorism, six thousand, three hundred and eighty-two. Adult probation, ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. Juvenile probation, four thousand. User fees, fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seven. The LH, sorry, excuse me, LHMF count, thirty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine. Free trial diversion, one hundred and eighty-two, four hundred, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. Cover bridge, ten thousand. Countermeasure, fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three. Auditors ineligible deductions, six thousand, one hundred and forty-nine. Elected officials training fund, four thousand, eight hundred. Family court, eleven thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. County health vaccine, three thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. And the stop grant, seventy-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-six. For a total advertised budget of twenty-two million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Again, those are advertised budgets that will not be our adopted budget.
You have to read the levies. You should read the levies.
Oh, I need to read the levies, too?
There's only five of those.
Okay. So, the maximum estimated funds for the levies?
Yeah.
Okay. The also, the maximum estimated funds to be raised for the levies in the general account is seven million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. The levy for the reassessment is two hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two. The levy for the cumulative bridge, three hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one. The levy for the health, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty. The levy for the cumulative capital development, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. For a total of eight million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, seventy-two and fifteen dollars. Sorry, eight million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, fifteen dollars. Does anyone have any thing to add? All right. We also have the town of Newport's budget to read. Can we do theirs because they have a couple firefighters on their department, on their board, and so they cannot approve their own? So we approve it for them every year.
Do you not have it?
I do. Show it to. There it is. All right. The current town of Newport has a budget of sixty-five thousand for the general, seven thousand for the LRNS, seventeen thousand for motor vehicle highway, two thousand for CCI, and twenty thousand for CCD. We will also adopt their budget for the next meeting.
Can you read their three levies out?
Oh, I'm sorry, read the levies again. The current levy for their budget for the general fund is thirty-seven thousand, forty-four dollars, and then eight hundred and seventy dollars for the CCD fund. Next, we have additional appropriations.
Transfer.
Oh, your library. Okay. The Vermillion County Library is asking us, as to the Clinton Library last month, a new state statute requires us to take, acknowledge their fiscal, to be their fiscal body.
So we need a motion to become Vermillion County Public Library's fiscal body?
Yes, just like we did the last month for Clinton.
Then I'd like to make a motion for Vermillion County Council to be the Vermillion County Public Library's fiscal body?
Second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Dreer, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Major, and a second by Mr. Dreer to become, county council to become the Vermillion County Library's fiscal body.
Right.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those approved, please say no. Motion is approved. Now we have transfer events. The first item was just a reporting only. The economic development is asking to move three thousand dollars in professional services to rent. And the next item is a grant match. Trails Alliance is asking us to grant match the fifty thousand dollars. It will be reimbursed back to us. They're asking to put the money in place so that they can go ahead and pay their bills, and then they will reimburse us back as soon as they get that money.
I mean, are they going to be able to get this grant?
It's a re, they already got the grant.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's, it's a cash issue. They don't, they need to have a pot that they can pay the bills out of and then get reimbursed. So it, it's, it's a, it will probably, I don't, depending on when they spend the money, when they get reimbursed, I suppose. But it usually takes the states sixty days to reimburse. But eventually, we should get the full fifty.
Yeah, I just want to ask, is it kind of sounding like if they get the grant?
No, I think, I don't know if anyone's here.
I don't think so.
But I talked to Lynn, and Amy, they talked to Lynn about it, and they, they, they are, there is a local match part of it, but they have that part that they're already, it's like thirty-seven-five or something. So I think the total grant is a hundred and some thousand. But the fifty is designed to be, okay, we pay it, and then it gets reimbursed, and we pay it and it gets reimbursed eventually. It's just like a cash flow.
Okay. All right. And then I'll make a motion for an additional fifty thousand dollar appropriation to budget line number three, one, 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 zero.
Second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Major, a second by Mr. Donovan, to allow the fifty thousand dollar grant match until the Trails Alliance can pay us back. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. There's also another appropriation by Trails Grant. It's not, it was behind the other ones you have, since we were on the Trails.
Just for the grant, honey?
Each one?
I don't think I have that saved.
The Trails grant finds new money from economic development, it is funding, now we're going to move the fifty into this fund, now it's to make the appropriation available.
Right.
And then for that other thirty, yeah, the thirty-seven-five local, now that part is not reimbursed.
That's fine.
So the Trails grant has thirty-seven thousand, five hundred from the edit, and then we have, we just appropriated the fifty thousand. So now we're putting it into their account, so that they can spend that.
All right. I'll make a motion to appropriate eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars into budget line number forty-six, oh, oh, three.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Major, a second by Mr. Donovan, to allow the eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollar budget line for the Trails Grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Next, we have an additional appropriation request in the amount of fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. It is coming from County General, is to replace some of the current alert systems in the courthouse that are not working. Secure Wave is doing, is an immediate alert by text, email, and to our local police radio Currently, there is a critical delay in the notification to law enforcement when one is activated.
Is this something money, CARESAC money can be used on, too?
I don't know, work with care, I have to find out how to use it pretty good for that. A couple calls we have, the owner of the current security system passed away. I don't know who the service is anymore, but if you press the, you need to hit the button, it can be a minute before we get the phone call down to jail, or it can be three or four minutes, but it's nothing consistent. We had him add texting before he passed away, and then the last time we actually needed it, nobody got that, or phone calls. This is an instant alert system that bypasses a call center in Florida, or Chicago, or wherever it's coming out of. But it also dispatches it directly on our radio, it's a recorded statement. It says the name of the office that the panic button came from, the specific location. Warren County just had theirs installed, Fountain County's had it for several years, Park County's got it, there's like seventeen or eighteen courthouses in Indiana that this company services. You know, neat thing is, some officer's got that radio channel off. It's going to be heard, and it's going to be heard directly at our dispatch, and it's immediate, there's no minute, one minute waiting for it. So as you press the button, there is a pause of holding the button, so hopefully you don't hit it accidentally, but there is that typical pause of a second or two of hold the button, and then it's immediately going out across the radio, and soon, you know, text messages and/or emails, if you want to set those up. They're out in Irving, Texas, and we unfortunately took out a best of five hundred dollar discount that was going to set Warren County's up, it was five hundred dollars at the same time, but we missed getting this on the dock ticket.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve additional appropriation of fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to budget line thirty-five, seven hundred.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Major, and a second by Mr. Bush, to allow fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for the Secure Wave emergency system. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Next, we have an appropriation from the Highway Department, is for one thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars. This is the money that was collected for spraying dust and oil, so we are putting it into their budget so they can spend it. It's the reimbursements from there.
Make a motion to approve the one thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars in the budget line one, one, seven, six, dash, five, three, three, dash, two, four, four, zero, two.
I'll second the motion.
Have a question about that?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wilson, Commissioner Wilson is up. You guys, we do that at request, or how does that work?
We're not allowed to do it for free, and we, because the number of years that we've been in Park Forest, we advertise it, people call in, they, uh...
You're not allowed to?
We're not allowed to do it, no.
By, by whose rules? Your own rules, or?
It's the state's rules. It's several years, and we do it for free, and now they're taking it, but we don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. All those in favor of allowing the one thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars back into the Highway Department's fund, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Next up, we have Wendy from the Health Department. She is here to discuss the appropriation. They received a testing grant for COVID-19. Wendy, the microphone on the podium is not on. If you just want to come up closer and speak a little louder if you can.
Hi, Cindy Reilly, she's our public health nurse, working this evening. What this is, the Indiana State Department of Health has offered every county in the state money to do community testing. So we have signed it, and our health officer and board are on board with us. So we will receive a hundred thousand dollars. The grant is from September first until June thirtieth, 2021. As of right now, I told you guys today, we did fifty, and when I went back and looked at the numbers, we have tested ninety. They do, some are residents, Park County, any counties can come and get tested for free, for any reason. They don't have to have symptoms, don't have to be sick, just for any, any, just to see if you have it, or don't have it, or whatever. So we have hired extra staff along with that. Penny is our lead person, and then we have a, and she has an RN, and then we have another lead person that does our swabbing, who is also an RN. They, they control the clinic. So, and right now, it's a drive-through, so you pull up, we go to the car, we swab, and it takes about, what, three to five days, business days? But we've noticed it's been around two to three days that they are getting the results.
If someone tests positive, and they're not from our county, they do go, that tally count goes back to their original guess.
It goes there.
Can you test for antibodies for previous illness? It doesn't cover that.
And anyone can be tested, no matter if they're showing symptoms or not, or no doctors know it at all. They don't have to have...
At your charge, we do not test to an under percent.
Okay. So anyone above age three and up?
Yes.
Okay. And it is free?
It's free.
Is there a limit? Like, you can't go get tested daily, or something? People abuse it, or?
Um, we, we have had some that have been tested more than one time.
I want to make a motion to allow.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Spence, and a second for Mr. Major, to appropriate the hundred thousand dollars for the COVID testing grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Appropriation is approved. And Wendy has a couple more. The next one we have, Wendy, is the five thousand dollars to migrate the claims payroll program and all the historical data into the...
Yes, it's been brought to our attention that our payroll and claims program will no longer be maintained. So if it goes down, then I'll have no accounting system for the Health Department. It's very easy to monitor, to go through, and balance. I balance with the county every two weeks, and keep record of what all of our funds are. We have five different funds that we keep track of. So our board did approve this, he gave us information, a guy from Greencastle, Mark Christie, was over this, and they will migrate the history, all of the claims, into one program, and that will also consist, our birth and death records, septic. We're trying to get all that on the computer, and that will, that will consist of that. The board is for five thousand dollars, and our board did approve it last Tuesday.
And this doesn't come from General, it is from her health funds.
It is from, within our cash.
I'd like to make a motion for an additional appropriation of five thousand dollars into budget line two, 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 zero, one, zero, 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 two, one, four.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Major, a second by Mr. Dreer, to allow the five thousand dollars to appropriate for their new programs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Appropriation is approved. And Wendy has one additional one, is for the amount of four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. Her, her public health nurse has requested the extra money. She is going from twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents to thirty dollars an hour from July first to the end of the year. And Wendy, do you want to say that one, or I'm sure the hype pushing?
Sure, I brought, if you have any questions, and if you want to... Um, I've been working really hard through all of this path to the COVID. I was trying to remember, but I believe it's been ten years since I came up with a board and asked for a raise, more than, you know, this twenty-five cent or dollar you get. I worked day, night, evenings, fifty, sometimes sixty hours a week with the COVID, never stopped even in the beginning, it was okay, because I had nothing else to do, but asking for a raise, because I, so many more projects have come up and involved...
You said you work, on average, fifty hours a week, right now?
I have been through the COVID, through the COVID contact, with patients and other contacts and contact tracing.
And this was presented to your board and approved also?
I'm sorry?
It was presented to the Health Board, and they approved this increase? And again, this is not a general fund account, it is the Health Fund.
It's just for this year, then? The continuation this year, or is it ongoing after the end of the year?
I, I assume it's ongoing.
Okay.
I would say at this point, Penny does get paid for public health nurses, twenty hours a week is what we pay them at the twenty-two, fifty per hour. So she does have twenty, twenty hours a week. We're trying to scale back on some of the duties, and actually, some of the other staff is taking over some of the contact tracing. It takes a lot of time, and so we've all stepped up and taken some, some of it off.
You said it's ongoing, was that your question? I was, I was reading that, it said July one to end of year.
We just have to appropriate money, because it's not in their budget.
Right, right. Yeah.
Any further questions? First? There are motion, anyone in your team?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Spence, a second by Mr. Costello, to approve the four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars, to appropriate that for the public health nurse. Any further questions? All those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
Aye.
The appropriation is approved. Thank you. All right.
Can we already take care of this overtime?
Um, it's another one.
Another one?
Mm-hmm. All right. Our next appropriation is the nine-one-one account. It is sixty thousand dollars for the E-911 dispatcher in overtime. It is coming from the nine-one-one fund. There is not a tax that we impose, because when you pay your cellphone bill, nine-one-one money goes into this fund.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the sixty thousand dollars for overtime into budget line twelve, eight hundred.
I'll second that motion.
Any further questions?
Nope.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Major, a second by Mr. Donovan, to approve the sixty thousand dollar nine-one-one overtime for the dispatchers. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Appropriation is approved. All right. Next, we have the Community Crossing Grant. It's from the commissioners. We were awarded the grant money of one million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and we are splitting that into the districts equally among, I believe they said, is that based on road miles that you split that out?
Mm-hmm.
You split the, the grant money into three districts based on the road miles? Or is that projects?
We get the grant, all we wanted to do, road mile, mile allows, okay.
These would be based on the project length of, of road miles per district, so...
The project mile, okay.
Yeah, I mean, apparently, there's more paving going to happen in District One than any, you know...
and we are splitting that into the districts equally among, I believe they said, is that based on road miles that you split that out? You split the, the grant money into three districts based on the road miles? Or is that projects?
We didn't turn any, well, we wanted to do, uh, road mile allows.
Mile allows, okay.
Yeah, these would be based on the project length of, of road miles per district, so.
The project, okay.
Yeah, I mean, apparently there's more paving going to happen in District One than any, you know, that, that sort of thing. But it doesn't have anything to do with the total miles in each district. I mean, they, they might, do you just break it up and roughly try to do one-third, one-third, and one-third? Is that how you typically try to do the grant?
Basically, you know.
Sometimes it doesn't work out that way.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah, the longest road difference between Rain County and, you know, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion by Mr. Major, a second by Mr. Bush, to approve the one million three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars appropriation into the Community Crossing Grant Fund. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The appropriation is approved.
Actually, on this same topic, if I may, we were discussing Community Crossing Grants yesterday, as if they may not occur for next year, I believe they're going to.
Yes, I heard today there was, it was sent out that they are going to actually have a.
Yeah, so that money that, that we had set aside for the match.
Yeah.
It was, it looks like you'll have to, eventually have to ask for that.
Yes, we, which we talked about that, Tim, about asking for that, um, it should be set up in January, so that way you guys can apply for the grant again.
Coincidentally, I guess, the very same day that we made the decision.
The day after.
News breaks at six, so.
Alright, that is it for appropriations. Um, open issues, the jail, um, I gotta, we received a message from one of the commissioners, and Mr. Wilson is also here. There's a special meeting concerning the jail renovations on September twenty-first at six thirty PM. Um, they are going to discuss, um, their plans of renovating and adding sixty beds to the jail, is that correct?
Right.
And it is here in the Commissioner's courtroom. Alright, new business, Sheriff Phelps is here to discuss some Archive Social Services.
Well, there's, we, uh, Indiana Public Access Council made clear that all, uh, government, everything we do has to be reported, including our Facebook accounts, not our personal ones, but for the Sheriff's Office, Department, every other entity that's out there. We price the two biggest companies. There, there was an incident in a neighboring county recently that had a fire just back up. I've never had a request provided, I don't know if anybody else has, but, uh, now that the Pandora's Box is open, I'm sure they're going to be done. But what it comes down to is that if somebody posts something, they can remove it themselves. We do block some if they get vulgar or get completely out of hand, but that's also in our, we state that we'll do that. Problem is, if we can't produce those ones that will remove, we block, we don't delete. But if you posted someone on the, on that page, and then later removed it, and there's some controversy about it, or whatever, uh, and, and we're asked to produce that, we wouldn't be able to, because we don't control what you delete and you put on there. So anyway, this incident happened in a neighboring county, made it pretty clear that we're going to have to do this. So it's all county offices that have the YouTube channel that's on there, that's all included in this, and does not include the webpage, uh, which Public Access Council says we need to do that too, but I think we'd have to have some more discussion or searching on something other company to do. Archive Social and Page Freezer are the two big ones in the social media world. Uh, they're within a hundred dollars of each other per month. Archive Social does not require any contract that you pay a year at a time, if you like them, you're done. Page Freezer, on the other hand, requires a three-year contract with not giving me any test account, uh, and then went in and did all this. They, they wouldn't let me control or search or do anything to test without, so I was kind of bent like that. But I also talked to a couple counties, Terre Haute City has it, uh, Archive Social, and then a lady in Scottsdale, Arizona, that takes care of theirs, they're stuck with Page Freezer, they didn't get out of their three-year contract within this ninety-day period, or whatever it is, so they're stuck with it for another three years. So, I, I think that's just bad business, I think it's smart to pay you extra hundred dollars a month, except I think it's a year at a time. The problem with them, we could try and do something a year down the road. But, uh, we're, we're going to have to do something, all county offices have to do it. I can't force them to jump into it, but all but one that I know of has already, were already in a test account that looks great. My recommendation number two, this should be in front of you, is Archive Social.
So, one subscription fee per month will cover everyone in the account?
Yeah, it's limited number of, of county accounts, but they do have, it talks about three thousand a new, uh.
Records a month, it says?
Right, and.
So it's like, when you post one thing, that includes all the comments as one, like, if you're on Facebook?
I understand that, yes.
Not that, we had three thousand comments and it doesn't, that we've.
Well, we have some that, that page where, you know, there'll be a lot of comments too.
But I mean, is each one of those comments considered a record, or is that whole post considered one record?
No, that's, that's each individual one. We already connected our accounts, and for whatever reason, it's not anywhere near about three pounds, so I'm not sure of exactly how it's counted, but I know that, and that goes back to the beginning of our, our account. Facebook doesn't delete anything in reality, it's, it's all there somewhere, but.
Okay.
Yet again, if we have, uh, I don't know if the records are pressed, we just, we have.
So even if you remove someone's comment, Facebook technically still has it there, and this company will actually save those?
This gets it the moment you hit send, or to post it, this grabs it immediately.
Okay.
And we tested that. I, I did a, a send on one of our own posts, I posted something, and then immediately, you know, however long it took me, long process of my own, and choose to leave, and it already happened.
I'd like to make a motion to take the Sheriff's Phelps' recommendation.
We don't actually have an, an item for the, he was just presenting it to us, so he can bring us a number.
Yeah, he can bring us that.
The dollar amounts on it.
Was the request?
It's forty-seven eighty-eight a year.
I don't think we advertised it, did we?
We didn't, we didn't advertise an additional. Do you have somewhere to pay it, or do you need an additional appropriation?
Well, I thought you had all that magic worked out.
Now, we can do it at the next meeting, then?
Yeah, I can look at the budget, and then if not, we'll submit an additional for October.
Okay.
Did you do it all for the, did you do it for all the counties over there?
Yeah.
So we can take it out of?
All the counties that have social media.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's unlimited social media accounts, so.
For this year, can we take it out of each office that would have an account? That way, we would be able to.
We got four or five connected to them now, right?
That way, reduce the amount for each office. Sure that maybe worked better?
Or, I, I may have some money I can scrape up, help up towards it for this year.
Okay.
If I was to split it up.
Split it up with each office that has social media?
That, that, yeah, I'd say that, I, I'm sure I can dig for it, yeah.
If not, I mean, we, we can put it on our October agenda, but in case you don't need.
I mean, most of them have a little bit in there for IT or.
Right.
For professional services and stuff, so.
That way you can get it done quicker before wait another month.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Does the library have to be included?
If you're a county, you can, that, that might be something, uh, your attorney can answer on a county entity.
Since we take fiscal responsibility, or.
I mean, since it's unlimited, I would recommend, I would see, I mean, I can't get in, you know, there'll be several administrators, maybe everybody would make some, you know, strict administrators, they, they have requests, you can do that.
They're their own entities, but it might be, you know, if there's some way to work it so that they could be able to, it'd be cheaper for them to.
Right, if we're not hitting our total.
Three hundred dollars a year to cover instead of paying.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Next, we have the amended salary ordinance. It is for the testing grant that we approved. And we, we need to approve the salary ordinance that goes along with that appropriation we just made.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended salary ordinance for COVID testing.
I have a motion by Mr. Major and a second by Mr. Bush to approve the amended salary ordinance for the COVID-19 testing grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ordinance is approved. Um, we actually have longevity pay. Can we go ahead and approve that, the resolution?
Yeah, you voted on it last month, but we didn't have the ordinance or the resolution ready, so this is a resolution to approve what you did by voice last month, the, um, for employees, it is what you approved last month. This is written in a way that it does cover elected officials, except for the commissioners and yourselves. And the commissioners have adopted some policies on how this will be implemented, as far as how they count years of service, and if somebody leaves, um, for more than X number of days, then, then they have to start over again longevity-wise. And that, we, the ordinance is, or this resolution's written in a way that allows for the commissioners to decide the issue of, of years of service. You guys are simply approving the actual monetary amounts. And it, we, we worked on the dates with, um, I needed to get, make sure that we had this, so it starts with the next paycheck that comes out, I think?
Yeah, for her second paycheck.
And it's retroactive to January one. And then when we do the salary schedule for next year, we will just throw this in at the bottom in a very similar way that we have it right now, with the date won't be there, but.
Well, then I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, resolution amending the 2020 salary schedule to include longevity pay. I'll second that motion.
Just have a question.
Yep.
I would hope in the future, before we adopt something like that, that we have a resolution in front of us, so we know what we're spending the money on, and how it's being spent. You know, I, I had no idea how that's going to be implemented prior to voting on that.
I think it was in packets, wasn't it?
To what?
It was in packets, I remember that.
I can't hear you.
It was in the packet, he said.
Well, I didn't, I didn't see it, okay.
I'm sorry, I, I, yeah, I, it was, we had it in a couple weeks, so, I'm sorry.
I don't recall having it, but that's fine.
I have a motion by Mr. Major and a second by Mr. Donovan to approve the longevity pay resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The resolution is approved. Okay. That is all that we have on our agenda. If there's any public comment, and just ask that you stand and state your name for the record.
If, if not, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.